Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Trustee Compass.
Here.
Trustee Reardon.
Here.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pecow.
Aye, are here. So where is, where's Trustee Radiszewski? Do we have a problem with her? I spoke too soon. For those of you who missed it, I complimented IT for how we were working so well remotely.
Please rise for the.
Is she here?
Trustee Radiszewski.
All right, we have everybody.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of the June 19th, 2023 regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting of June 19th, 2023.
Second. Call or roll?
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pecow.
Abstain, I was not here.
Community Pride Award, Austin Bilski, presentation.
So it's my pleasure to present the Community Pride Award to Austin Bilski, founder of Cups for Cancer. What a phenomenal effort by a young man to, to help improve the lives of people affected by childhood cancer. And to date, I think he's raised over $16,000, $18,000 for children and teens fighting cancer. That's just phenomenal work. He actually lives, his address is Orland Park, but is technically Homer Glen, but we're still awarding him a, a Community Pride Award tonight. But I would also like to acknowledge that the mayor of Homer Glen, Christina Nitski-Troyke is here, and I'd like to give her the mic as well. So if she would like to speak, I would appreciate it. It will be. Now it's on.
Thank you, Mayor. I am too honored to have Austin Bilski as a resident of Homer Glen. And Mayor Pecow and I would like to kick off your donations this year with $500 each, totaling $1,000 to get you to your goal. I believe he wanted to reach a goal this year of $8,000. So we'll start him off with his first thousand. But thank you, Austin, for being such an amazing resident of Homer Glen.
So with that, Austin, I'm going to come down here and present you in recognition of your impressive fundraising and charitable donations to help improve the lives of people affected by childhood cancer, the Orland Park Community Pride Award.
Accounts payable through July 17th, 2023 approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I move to ratify and approve the accounts payable from June 20th, 2023 through July 17th, 2023 in the amount of $11,493,248 and 33 cents.
Second.
And just so everyone knows, the reason why our accounts payable is so high is because we haven't had a meeting since the 17th, since we skipped the, the third, the meeting on the third. Call or roll?
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. 2023-0533 payroll for June 23rd, 2023 approval. Payroll for July 7th, 2023 approval. Item C Dell computer purchase. Item D disposal of village equipment online auction, public works department ordinance. Item E purchase of one Henderson Mark III dump body and snow removal equipment package installation. Item F sidewalk defect repair program, ITB 23-043 rejection. Item G 2023 sidewalk removal and replacement program amendment number one. Item H neighborhood road improvement program amendment number one. Item I public works fuel tank replacement project A and E services. Item J road improvement, 2023 road improvement program construction management change order number one. Item K soils and materials testing and engineering RFP award. Item L 2023 land development code amendments, one. Item M amusement device operator license edition. Someone's not happy. Item N intergovernmental agreement, IGA Illinois Department of Transportation, I dot for Illinois 7 Southwest Highway, south of 135th Street to 131st Street. Item Q athletic field user agreement. Item P contract extension bid net direct. Item Q. That was item P. Item Q shoe shop park wetland delineation. Item R amendment to Steinhopples, Inc. inducement agreement.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to approve items A through R of the consent agenda.
Second. Call or roll? Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pecow.
Aye. Trustee Radiszewski, you're making me a liar from the, from the first meeting.
Orland Hills East Road and Ditch Reconstruction Design.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the proposal from V3 Companies of Woodbridge, Illinois, titled professional engineering proposal, Orland Hills East Road and Ditch Reconstruction Project, dated July 6th, 2023, in the amount not to exceed $98,244. And, I'm sorry, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
Just in the spirit of Trustee Healy's historical trivia, I do want to note that for those that might be confused, I think everyone on the board knows this already, of course. But the Orland Hills subdivision was started in 1950, or 1950s. The municipality formerly known as West Haven did not become Orland Hills until 1986. So if there's any confusion as to who was first, the Orland Hills subdivision or Orland Hills municipality, it's the Orland Hills subdivision.
That's, that's good to know. I did know that. I think the, the rest of the board knew that, but it's good for the public to know. Yeah, obviously, West Haven wanted to capitalize on the Orland name. So with, with that said, one thing I do want to comment on is the engineering. You know, we went through an extensive process to qualify people and provide bidders for our engineering projects because we felt our engineering costs were way too high. We were, prior to the, this, the trustees being here, we had much more sole source projects requesting, requesting bids on just certain projects. So we were getting higher pricing. So we're seeing the competitive bids, they all still bid, and we end up getting the best pricing. So I think that was a decision, a good decision for the village to move in that direction. Call or roll?
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
Demolition of 14101 and 14249 Wolf Road, contract amendment number one. Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to approve contract amendment number one for the demolition of the parking lots at 14249 Wolf Road to Fowler Enterprises LLC for an amount not to exceed $36,200 and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any comments? So just to be clear, we see some silliness out in the parking lot. Everything is, that we do is prevailing wage. So they're all paying the same wages. So my comment is if you want to get the bids, you should not bid four times, or three times as much as the other bidder. Because we owe it to the taxpayer to give it to the most qualified low bidder and who has, who is paying prevailing wage. Call or roll?
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
Community Imports and Corporating Doing Businesses, Community Honda of Orland Park Sales Tax Rebate Agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I move to approve a sales tax rebate agreement with Community Honda of Orland Park as outlined pending approval of all village planning, zoning, and building requirements and authorize the village manager to execute the rebate agreement subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any comments? So this is a fairly standard sales tax agreement that we have with our auto dealers anytime that they're expanding. And basically what it does is it uses their current baseline of, and any additional sales they get off that, we share back half their sales tax to try and offset some of their capital costs. And, you know, it's just something we have to do, given the, given the fact that we have the number three auto row in the state and we want to keep all those auto dealers. So, so it's been in place for a long time before we came here. It's a good policy and we've continued it. Call or roll?
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
Circ Paranormal Special Event Permit.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to approve permitting Circ Entertainment, Inc. to produce and host the Circ Paranormal on the grounds adjacent to Orland Square Mall on August 10th through the 13th, 2023 contingent upon meeting all of the village's permitting requirements, payment of fees, and inspections, and authorize the village manager to execute a security agreement between the village and Circ Entertainment subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
It's a sad state of affairs that we, I have to ask this question, but I just want to verify with the chief that we've gone through all of the security arrangements with Circ Entertainment and it checks off with you.
Yes, we, we met with them earlier in the week and we reviewed their plan, made some suggestions and worked with it.
Thank you.
If I recall, George, they've done this in the past, they've done this in the past, right? Last year they did it?
I believe so, yes. Yeah, Mr. Mayor. I, I think it's a great idea to use that, you know, the facility there, all the parking lot, for other things like this and maybe even outdoor type activities that brings, you know, traffic to the mall. And again, following all the permits and the safety concerns, but outdoor festival type of things in the summer with that amount of parking space is something that I think they, we should, you know, continue to work with, is it Simon Properties people, on ways to get people coming through there as well.
I don't think anyone here even knows this, but they, they actually were going to put in a, a park back there. And it was a multimillion dollar cost to do that. And it allowed for some outdoor entertainment and the, and the like. Unfortunately, it was a COVID casualty, just like the AMC Theater was a COVID casualty for that area. So, but while we're on that subject, because I get these questions about the mall and how we're doing, there was actually a report out about retail sales and as an economic indicator across, and you could plug in different towns. And I sent this to the BIA, so hopefully it'll get up on the, on our Facebook page soon. But essentially, we were just slightly ahead of Oakbrook for our retail sales. Well, now we're way ahead of Oakbrook and almost at Schaumburg and Naperville. So we've spiked more than anyone else. So anyone who wonders whether or not Orland Park is doing well, we're doing phenomenally with our, with our retail sales, and obviously that includes the mall. Call or roll?
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
2023 Polish-American Festival Special Event Permit. Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
I move to approve permitting Highlander Production Incorporated to produce and host the 2023 Polish-American Craft Beer Food and Music Festival on the grounds adjacent to Crescent Park on September 23rd and 24th, 2023 from 12 to 9 p.m. each day contingent upon meeting all of the village's permitting requirements, payment of fees, and inspections, and to authorize the village manager to execute a security agreement between the village and Highlander Production subject to village attorney review.
Second. Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
So chief, you probably expected this, as I've seen question as before, everything look good?
Yes, again, we had multiple meetings and worked with our plan.
Thank you, chief.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
One thing I like on this agreement and the other agreement with the security agreement, where four police officers are going to be hired back that are Orland Park police officers, it'll cost not to exceed $90 per hour being paid for by the venue, correct?
Correct.
I think that's very important in addition to other things like weapon detection systems. So that's a very good agreement. So thanks for including it on big festivals.
Call or roll? Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy, I'm sorry, Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pecow.
Aye. And I'm really looking forward to next year when we have our concert venue where they can use something like that, because it's set up very well for our security and everything else as well.
Intergovernmental Agreement by and between the Village of Orland Park and the Board of Library Trustees of the Village of Orland Park, providing for expenditure of library debt service on balance.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement by and between the Village of Orland Park and the Board of Library Trustees of the Village of Orland Park, providing for expenditure of library debt service fund balance and authorize the village manager to execute the agreement subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
So over the past few meetings, we've heard some perspectives regarding the spending of other government bodies within the village, most notably District 135. And while I shared my fellow trustees' concern, as a taxpayer, I viewed the vote that was in front of us at that time as constrained to whether or not the permits were within the bounds of the village ordinances, just as we would review any other private business permit. I do want to note this case is a little bit different than those in that the village board does have an accountability for approving the library's levy and fund transfers such as this one. And I would wager a guess that both boards here present, both the library and the village board, would prefer that those decisions remain separated. And I don't even know if that's even legally possible, but that's a conversation for another day. But be that as it may, I preface all that just to explain that I view the decision before me today as including a matter of fiscal policy, not just the general adherence to village ordinances like with the school districts permit request that we had in the last couple of meetings. I know that the approximate $675,000 is but a fraction of the library's budget. But since our vote is required on even this amount, I did struggle with it a little bit. This amount was accrued due to the county placing a 5% loss in cost factor to the bond as a contingency. So this is a revenue contingency. This money was already collected from the taxpayers. And to be clear again, this is not the library's doing, this is the county's requirement that they collected this money. So my main concern is really just with the positioning of the, of the proposed transfer. I think when this was initially proposed or initially we saw this, it was in light of applying this to operational expenses. It's since been updated that the library has sent a short list of capital expenses. They'd like to now apply this funding, but arguably those expenses, I would presume, would already be part of their budget planning. So from, as this is from a revenue side, I would have preferred to have seen this as takeout from revenue generation rather than a use it or lose it mentality that we often see even in the private sector with regards to budgeting. It's often the issue I have with state and federal budgets, where when they overcollect, again, not the fault of the library, they always manage to find a new need to spend it on something else rather than constraining costs. With how this was presented, I had the impression that the library would find $675,000 in new capital expenses rather than treating this as revenue relief for 2024. And perhaps I'm mistaken, so I could be convinced otherwise. Perhaps it all ends up the same, and maybe the amount is not consequential enough to make a huge impact on the property owners. But since the nature of this lands before us here today, where I have to vote on it as if I would a village fund transfer, to the information I have now and barring another compelling argument convincing me otherwise, my current position would be to vote no with the hope of seeing a plan that would address revenue impacts rather than expense impacts.
Any other comments? So I too struggle with this. So I look at the fact that the library itself is 52% of our property tax levy for one building, which has always been, it's always bothered me. I haven't really seen an effort on the operational side, didn't see it during, didn't see it during COVID either. So it's, it's concerning to me. I, like Trustee Compass, it's extra money. It's kind of the use it or lose it mentality. I lived with that in the military. I know Joel will shake his head. We saw a lot of that. There was no incentive to save money because he just spent it, you know. And while I would expect if, if taking funds like this, I'd expect to see a reduction in the levy. I doubt we'll see that because we never do. So that's concerning to me. But on the other hand, while the, while the Village of Orland, well, our board can actually make a statement on this and, and, and overrule another board, I also look at it from the standpoint of the other board is elected by the people and the people have made those choices. And the people made the choice for a large bond. It's actually a choice even dating back then I disagreed with because I thought at that time, everything was going to be moving towards, it was going to be moving towards the internet. As it turns out, it did, that's exactly what happened. So I wasn't sure we, we had the need. But regardless, the people, the people voted for that. The people elected this current board to make those decisions. So I too would, you know, as a resident, I would prefer to see the money returned. I'd prefer to see more attention paid to the levy. But again, the, the people have elected the current board to, to make those decisions. So, so like I said, I struggle with, you know, with the vote either way because I see, I see a point of view in both ways. Any other comments? Call or roll?
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
No.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
Fall Household Hazardous Waste Event. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to approve the Fall Household Hazard Waste Event with the Orland Township Highway Department, Heritage Environmental Services, and Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any comments? I thought this was a good event the last time. I know that the Village of Orland Park through waste management allows household pickup of this. This does allow people living within the, the limits of Orland Park, but that are happy to be, you know, in the township, gives them the opportunity to also take advantage of this, plus the people of Orland Park can take advantage of it as well. So I think it's, it's useful in that regard, and it was a good partnership. We had no issues with it, so I see no problems in doing this again. So call or roll?
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
Strategic Plan Survey Contract Award.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to approve awarding RFP 23-042 Village of Orland Park Strategic Plans Survey to Polco and purchase the annual engage model for an amount not to exceed $55,400 and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any questions or comments? I'll give a little bit of color on this. You know, we, you know, we've been doing the strategic plan, and this was one of the things that I talked about was getting a survey. Now arguably, you know, some of this, some of the decision that we wanted to get input on, we couldn't because of the time constraints that we had regarding some of the decisions we had to make regarding capital, but still a lot of this, we can still get information. And I participated, as I have a lot of experience with some market-based surveys, I participated in these discussions and in the proposal review for that reason. And Polco was definitely the most qualified, I think, to, to do what we were looking to do. You know, I think for the, for the other one that we, that got to the interview process, they, they simply were doing too narrow of a scope and it wasn't going to give us the information. This is, a lot of this is education as well as information. So, so I think Pol, and Polco did our community service survey the last time, did a nice job. So from that perspective, it's good and they have some, and because of the way this is set up, we will actually be able to use it for other surveys. So we'll be able to do some surveys on the parks when we're redoing them, and we'll be able to geotag and, and focus our efforts on certain, certain areas, certain neighborhoods for park improvements and things to get feedback that way to try and get even more feedback than we've been getting. So I think that's, it's a, it's very useful. Call or roll?
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
One Positive Place Contract Approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to approve the proposal with One Positive Place for Employee Engagement Initiatives in an amount not to exceed $39,822 and authorize village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I'd just like to say, I, I think overall, we've heard nothing but very positive outcomes so far. I know I've, I've gotten a witness firsthand, Bill Durkin, coaching members of staff directly. Outstanding, I'm grateful for his help. I'm glad that he's here, and it's just been a good program overall.
Yeah, and, and I will echo that. I mean, one of the issues we had when I arrived is that we basically, everyone had been in their jobs forever. And I know it was a big change when we had the early retirement and, you know, well, we had half of our non-police department leave in a period of six months, including all of our leadership. But the, the positive thing about that is we brought in a lot of fresh ideas. We brought in a lot of new leaders with new ideas that are open-minded. And what that's done, and I know at times for people who are part of a municipal staff, they get concerned, oh, we have really high turnover. We don't. We have way higher turnover than a typical municipality, but I actually think that's a good thing. And that's because we're, we've spent time training people. And I know George has heard me say this, I know that all the directors have heard me say this, is that when we train people to be better at their jobs, they may not have an opportunity here. Maybe the next position above them is not open, and they may go somewhere else. That is not a poor reflection on the Village of Orland Park. That's a positive reflection on the, on the Village of Orland Park. It opens up an opportunity for someone else. And this type of training helps those people that are stepping into that leadership role be more prepared for that role at that time. So that just helps the entire organization. So this is fantastic training, and it's been very well received. Heard very positive feedback, and I've witnessed it firsthand, and it's been very good. Call or roll?
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
I abstain, I have a business relationship with the vendor.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
Leadership Development Program Gallup Training. Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to approve the proposal with Gallup Incorporated for Boss to Coach and Global Strengths Coach Training in the amount not to exceed $32,045[1715.04] Strengths Coach Training in the Amount Not to Exceed $32,045 and authorize village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Trusty Malani.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've been making great strides with our training and, you know, developing our leaders, which, which is fantastic. And I think this is something I mentioned to George, and just want to make sure we reiterate that training is great. We have to make sure that the training gets applied in situations and that we can actually receive feedback to see how it's working. Because, you know, training just to train is one thing, but, you know, training and applying is two different things. So let's just make sure that we're going through this and we'll actually be able to use it in specific situations.
And if I could, the, the thing with Bill Durkin that was approved, every one of our staff members will be completing Gallup's Q12 questionnaire. It's a questionnaire on employee engagement. That'll, this, it's going to be our barometer going forward as far as how we're, how we're really doing as far, with development and leadership. So every so often after this, as we're, as we're developing our organization, we will, we will do that Q12, and that's what we'll compare against. And what's interesting about that training is that they've basically done that training across state employees, across the whole country. And we know that here in this state, the state employees fair, pretty much run the place, and they have the third lowest engagement score in the country. So they're not happy. They run it, but they're not happy. So that, and that is not atypical to see, to see that where, you know, all leadership has been pushed off to the employees and it runs them up. Well, then it ends up where nobody's happy because they actually don't have the leadership and coaching and the things that they need to actually successfully run an organization. So we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that doesn't happen here.
Call a roll.
Trusty Malani.
Aye.
Trusty compass.
Aye.
Trust Healy.
Aye.
Trusty catsiness.
Aye.
Trusty Reardon.
Aye.
Trusty Radishevsky.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Non-scheduled citizens and visitors.
So we have one non-scheduled citizen and visitor signed in, Pat Sheridan. So a reminder, you have three minutes for your comments, and you can come up to the lectern if you're here. Oh, so apparently he left. So I guess he's not commenting tonight. Okay. Anybody else here to speak? Any other citizens? Okay. Board comments. Trusty Radishevsky. Yes. I wanted to call you first so you didn't hang up on us.
Trusty Malani.
Well, there weren't half of my comments. So I guess I'll talk about the concert at Central, Centennial Park West over the weekend. It was a, it was a great event. Everybody seemed to have a great time. The parking lot was full due to not being able to use the field, but we had a successful groundbreaking out there. So we're going to be doing construction out there and working towards our goal of having our summer events out there next year. So we're all definitely looking forward to that. So appreciate everybody that came out, the bands that played for us, and the vendors that supported us as well. So thank you.
Trusty catsiness.
To one did share with trustee Radishevsky said about our police department and the outstanding job they do day in and day out. And welcome to the four new officers that are joining us. And a reminder that we have National Night Out Against Crime, August 1st, from 5 until 8 p.m. It's held at the Village Green, which is right in front of here in the village hall. There will be food games, community booths, giveaways, K-9 Officer Maverick will be there, and free raffles. So encourage everybody to come out, support National Night Out, and support the Orland Park Police Department. Thank you.
Trusty compass.
So it's been a few weeks since we've last met. I'd like to thank Recreation, the Police Department, VMO, Public Works, and all involved for multiple great evenings. We had a very well-attended series of Market in the Parks that's still going very strong. And I think every time I go, it looks like it's a little bit more crowded. Those have been fantastic. I think we have perhaps the most attended 4th of July celebration yet, or certainly seem like it.
Looked like it.
You know, the group was, was quite crowded out there, outstanding night. And then our second, very much enjoyed Centennial West concert. I know it was enjoyed because just the sheer number of people that came up afterwards thanking us for that concert. It was, it was a great evening. All three acts were fantastic. It's great to finally have our groundbreaking of the Centennial West, as others have mentioned here. That's been a project 22 years in the making. It's a little less than half my lifetime. So the crowd there and our first concert this year have showed a great amount of enthusiasm and excitement and anticipation for this new venue. I'm looking forward to seeing it next year. I believe it'll be even better for the Taste of Orland Park starting next year. I know many residents that will be much happier with the parking situation at the very least. Speaking of the Taste of Orland Park, I'd like, like being a little bit more specific in my thanks with staff. And this was, well, this one, I think is hot off the press. I'd like to thank Doreen Bila for all the work she does to encourage more sponsors for our programs. Someone informed me today that Doreen secured another platinum level sponsor for the Taste. So I'd also like to thank Northwestern Medicine for the generous sponsorship. And again, thank you to Doreen, Erin, Ray, everyone else, all involved with securing these sponsorships and everything you do to make these programs a continued success. And lastly, I know it's redundant, but I'm going to do it anyway. I think, you know, we all say and believe truly in our hearts that we have the best police department around. And I think what I was thinking about today, this is, these are always my favorite meetings, the biennials where we, where we do these awards. And I can't help but think that these are the women and men that oftentimes see the very worst in society, and we get nothing but their very best in return. And that says a lot. I know that there's been a couple officers that, not, not just tonight for life-saving efforts. I believe at least one of them was a recipient the last time around. So it goes to show that not just what we typically think of policing efforts, but even, even maybe drifting a little bit into the fire district, but certainly in support of medic services, they all do an outstanding job. And I couldn't be more proud of the chief, the deputy chief, and the rest of the command staff, as well as all the women and men that served. So again, thank you for all that you do. That's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Trust Healy.
Mr. Mayor, while I was on vacation, a very nice vacation, I must say, I would like to, you know, I noticed that Pat Fitzgerald lost his job at Northwestern. He is a product of Orland Park and Carl Sandberg High School. And we've always looked at Pat Fitzgerald as a, a model for, for things to go on. And I am, he is, although I don't know him personally, I have met some people that have met him, and I have nothing but positive things to say. He's been an inspiration to so many people. And it seems like, just from what little I read, it seemed like it was a rush to judgment, almost like Justice Kavanaugh at the Supreme Court, where he was, found guilty pretty quick of going against the current woke culture. This, he has, for my anecdote about him was that he, he came by, one of his former, one of his players had an aneurysm, and he was a star player at Lincoln Way and got very sick and had to go under an operation. He'd never play football again. And on his time off, Pat Fitzgerald came and visited and made a very profound inspirational talk with him and helped get him out of his funk and get him on his way to get exercising and studying again. Not every coach would do that for a player who is, you know, is little or no use for the football team. But I think it showed the character which is displayed on TV and elsewhere, that he is a, a good product to look at and a, you know, a good person for representative of Orland Park. I think he still is. A victim of this toxic woke culture where it's, it's just not, not a good thing. There, this woke culture is against family, God, and community. I just, you know, have to say we should be rejecting that woke culture. And I hope Pat Fitzgerald finds a, a good landing wherever he goes. And my second comment is, for those of you who weren't here for the police ceremony, it's very impressive to see how their families come out and support them. It's a very tight community, and it should be. It's, you know, it's just very impressive to see that. Thanks.
Trusty Reardon.
Thank you. Yeah, my first comment was going to be, just what Bill was talking about there at the end, is I said every single time, it's, it is one of my favorite meetings as well. And the accolades are great for all the police department, but I always look out and I see the children, the very young children, the parents, the grandparents of these police officers. I have a number of police officers in my family, and I think of, you know, the, these folks who are, you know, worried, sick when they go to work every day and come back, you know, and then they get these awards and do great things. And it's just so impressive to see them, and I feel for them, for the life that they have to live with a police officer and their family. So it is great to see, like you said, Bill. And secondly, it's July 17th already. Summer is slipping away. There have been a number of great events. We've talked about a lot of them, but there still are a number of great ones left with Taste and the last concert and a number of things. So it gets cold and miserable here in the winter. So get out, do some of these things in Orland. They've been great. I've been to probably more this year than I have in the last 13 years that I've lived here, and they've been fantastic. So get out and mingle with your neighbors, and maybe everyone will be a little nicer to each other then. That's all.
Thank you. So, yeah, I haven't, it's been a while since I've been here because we missed, we canceled a meeting, and then I missed the previous meeting. And, you know, in spite of what you might have heard from some, some people in the press, I actually had announced that I wasn't going to be here because I was meeting my granddaughter. Turns out I met her before that because she was born a little early, but the trip was still planned. So, you know, there's nothing like it. That's why we raised our families here is because it's a great place to raise a family. There's nothing like seeing your, your family grow. The, while I was away and since the last meeting that I was at, we've had a lot of things happen. Thank you to Public Works for all the hard work they do. Tonight, we had some things, some more road programs. So you've got Deer Chase Estates, Swallow Ridge, Georgetown, Camino Terrace, and Crystal Ridge, where, as I said earlier today, we're about six years ahead of what the road program was when I got here and when we were fought from expanding it. And so we're getting to, to your roads, just like we are your parks, and then also the sidewalks. So thanks to Public Works. Thanks to Recreation for all that you do. This time of year especially becomes clear, all the hard work that you do. You know, we've had, you know, two great concerts since I was here last. And, and then we, you know, we're going to have the Taste of Orland. We're going to have another concert this weekend. You have concert in the park at Crescent Park. So you have all of that. And next year, I'm really excited to see that move to Centennial Park West. As trustee compass said, a long time in coming. It was approved in 2003 with a band shell. It just never happened. And so we're getting all of that done. And I encourage people to go over there, take a look, take a look at the, the progress of it. But we should have all of our events there, including Taste of Orland, which I had a lot of questions about that. It's actually designed to handle Taste of Orland. That was actually the big constraint, so to make sure that we have all the food booths and everything right there where you can enjoy the concert as opposed to separate it and as opposed to sitting in a parking lot. It's actually going to be in the venue. So, and obviously, we have almost 3,000 parking spaces there relative to what we have sitting here at the village hall, which we use, by the way, for the Taste. You know, obviously, it's a lot of parking. So that's going to be fantastic. Tonight, we also honored our police department to do a fantastic job. Of late, we've seen a lot of attacks. So in the last couple of months, attacking our chiefs, or our current chief, our previous chiefs, some attacks on our department. The most latest thing is to attack the fact that we're building a training facility, which just blows my mind why someone who lives in Orland Park would not want our police to be well-trained and have a top-notch training facility as opposed to having to go to other towns to shoot their gun to qualify. It just absolutely makes zero sense to me whatsoever. But as I stated several months ago, this is what you're going to hear. There's no ideas, no solutions, no positives, no nothing. So we're going to continue to focus on that. Why? Because for the last five years, last five years out of the last 28, we have the lowest crime we've ever had. We've had, what, four years straight now of the lowest violent crimes of towns over 50,000, lowest violent crime rate, towns over 50,000 in the state of Illinois. It's outstanding work from top to bottom. And it's not just reflective of this board, as I've said many times, it's reflective of previous boards who also supported the police department. It's culmination of years and years of effort to make that happen. And personally, there's absolutely no way, we're not going to continue to do that and build you guys a training facility that you deserve. So I'm really excited about that next year. So we've got the training facility being built next year. We have the Centennial Park West being built this year. Schusler Park, which we also had a groundbreaking for in the last month, and with Michael Schofield and Kendall Coin Schofield, and by the way, congratulations to their new baby boy as well. So all of these things are happening in the next few, next year, year and a half. And that's due to the hard work here, the fiscal constraint that we showed to, to get ourselves in a position where we could do it, and also to have a plan knowing exactly what our expenses, expenses were going to be. The, the last thing I'll point out again is the, the good news on the economy, and the fact that Orland Park has almost caught Naperville and Schaumburg for retail sales this year. So just, just goes to show you how well we're doing from a retail perspective and from an economic perspective. With that said, going forward again, we have, we have forecasts coming this Sunday at Crescent Park. We have August 19th. We have yet another concert in the park. It will be in the parking lot again. By the way, we had 2,500 people at the last one. And, and Taste of Orland will be, this is the last year. It'll be held at this location because it will move next year. So look forward to seeing everyone in all those events. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman.
Trusty compass.
I move to go into executive session for A, approval of minutes, B, pending litigation against affecting or on behalf of the village or when found by the board that such action is probable or imminent, C, setting a price for sale or lease of village property, D, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, E, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees.
Second.
Call a roll.
Trusty compass.
Aye.
Trusty catsiness.
Aye.
Trust Healy.
Aye.
Trusty Malani.
Aye.
Trusty Reardon.
Aye.
Trusty Radishevsky.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Go into executive session.